All right, well, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay on this? No. How about now? Is that better? No? Can't hear outside? Okay, let me try something different. How about now? Is that better? How about now? Can you guys hear now? It's on? Okay, well, I'll talk loud and then I'll try to keep this so you guys can hear. So, good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us for our public hearing for the Los Lunas Boulevard project. Before I get started, I'm gonna ask if Kelly would come up and offer interpretation services to anybody that would need that.
Si, buenas tardes, si alguien necesita interpretación al español, acérquense atrás y les podemos dar auriculares. Muchas gracias.
Well, again, thank you for joining us. My name is Wyatt Karchner, and again, I want to thank you for taking the time out of your day to be here. Before we get started, I wanted to recognize a few of our elected officials. First, we have Representative Baca. And then we also have Mayor Griegego. So, thank you both for being here this evening. So, what you guys are all here for, and I think you guys probably all know, is for the new Los Lunas Boulevard project. So, this has been a project that's been going on and been planned for probably almost twenty years, and it's been a collaborative effort between lots of folks. We're here at the village tonight, but the village has kind of taken this, spearheaded this towards the end, but the county has been involved in this, the Middle Rio Ground Council of Governments, the New Mexico Department of Transportation, FHWA. So, there's been lots and lots of folks that have been involved in this throughout the entire twenty years of planning. So, just to give you guys an idea of where things are and how this new corridor is gonna be, so right here, you guys can see my mouse, this is the current I-25 New Mexico Six interchange. And you guys can all see the black line here, which is New Mexico Six. This new project that we're talking about tonight is the yellow lines that are shown here. So, we are about a mile south of the New Mexico Six interchange. Right here is the corrections facility, just to give you guys a little bit of reference. We're gonna have a new diamond interchange at this location. We're gonna go parallel to the existing Morris Road. We're gonna cross 314 and the train tracks by the district courthouse. We're gonna cross over the river, and then we're gonna tie into New Mexico 47 at Hyde Lane. I'll walk through that a little more detail as we move through the presentation, but that generally gives you an idea of where things are for this project. So, why are we doing this? And I think most of you guys probably know why we're doing this, but there's four big key components as to why this project is happening. There's deficiencies within the existing system. There's lots of growth happening in this area. Traffic congestion is a big problem on New Mexico Six. And then a big thing that we know is a problem is emergency response. And so, I'm gonna go through these a little bit in detail. So, this has been studied again for twenty years, and there's been lots of deficiencies that have been identified in the transportation system. New Mexico Six is the only river crossing that connects to I-25 for nearly ten miles, both north and south. New Mexico Six lacks capacity, and I think we've seen that especially when there was, the bridge was closed partially, and New Mexico Six was backed up. Even if you were to go out there right now, you would probably see that New Mexico Six is severely congested. And so, the village and the DOT have done lots of things to improve New Mexico Six over the last twenty years, but frankly, they're just out of room to add more lanes. They're restricted by several things that just prevent them from expanding that and adding any additional capacity. So, the other things that are happening is growth and development. The village of Los Lunas in Valencia County is growing significantly. It's growing west of I-25, which we all know about. East of the river in the county, there's lots of growth happening. And then also along New Mexico 47 and New Mexico 314. So, this is not only to plan for the future, to relieve some of that traffic congestion, but also some of the congestion that's already occurring. Again, traffic congestion on New Mexico Six is a big problem. I bet if we were to go out there today, we could take the same picture of traffic backed up for long ways at all of these signals. So, that's something we're hoping to fix. And then another big problem is emergency response. There's no hospitals currently in Valencia County, so getting that congestion really delays emergency response. And so, by adding this new corridor, taking some traffic off of New Mexico Six, and giving emergency response a different route, that should reduce response times for both fire, EMS, and police as necessary. So, when we go through this process, we really look to make sure that we are defining a purpose and making sure that we're addressing that need. So, the purpose of this project is to address traffic flow on New Mexico Six by adding a new road between I-25 and New Mexico 47. The project aims to address travel demand to high-growth areas and improve the efficiency of emergency response within northern Valencia County. So, as I talked about, this project's been going on for a long time. Some of you guys have probably been to the initial public meetings that were held years and years ago. The first time this really kind of started was in 2001. So, twenty-three years ago, this started kind of planning up. In 2012 was some of the initial public meetings that were had. There was an alignment study that the COG did with a different consultant, where they determined where to place this new corridor. And the village has been working since then, along with the county, to secure right-of-way along that corridor. They've done numerous legislative requests. They've done trips to Washington DC to try to secure funding. And finally, in 2019, money started to come available for this project, and things started to kind of pick up steam as we moved forward. In 2020, we started the design, and now, as we move forward to 2023, we acquired all of the right-of-way this winter, so that was a big step for us. And then here we are now, in May of '24, with our public hearing. That means our environmental document has been signed, and we're moving forward into the finalizing of the plans and construction. So, we expect that the project will bid this late summer, and we expect construction to start in the fall of this year. We do know it's a big project, so it's gonna take some time to complete, especially with some of the restrictions we have for construction. But we anticipate about a three-year construction period from the time they start until it's complete. So, just to give you a little more history on why we ended up where we did, there was an alternative analysis report that was completed in 2012. They studied, I think, ten or fifteen alignments. They narrowed it down to about five that were the most promising, and then they selected Morris Alternative B. So, that's where Moles &amp; Corbin and our team picked up this project, was when the alignment was selected. This was gone through what the DOT calls the NMDOT Location Study Procedures, where they analyzed the pros and cons of different alignments and looked at an analysis to determine the best location. And through that was public involvement, so I'm sure some of you guys have been involved since then as well. So, what I'm gonna do now, oh, just remind you of a few other public involvements that we had. In 2020, we did have another public meeting. Due to COVID, that was a completely virtual public meeting. But we did have a good attendance at that meeting, I think we had about sixty people attend. Some of the questions you guys can see on the screen here. Questions about access, there was lots of support for the project. And then about timing, everybody wants things to be done quickly, and so, there was lots of questions about timing and how quickly it would be done. So, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna turn it over to John Tashik. He's gonna talk to you about the environmental process and the environmental document.
Thank you, Wyatt. Yeah, good evening, everybody. Yeah, I'm John Tashik, I'm with Bar Engineering, and I've been working on the environmental document for this. Because we have federal funding in the project, we're required to comply with the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA. And NEPA requires that social, economic, and environmental factors be considered in decision-making. And for this project, we have prepared an environmental assessment. It's online, I have a copy right here, if anybody wants to take a look at a paper copy. The EA has been a collaborative process, as Wyatt mentioned, between the village, the DOT, the Federal Highway Administration, Lansing County, the MRGCD, the Bureau of REC, the Corps of Engineers, US Fish and Wildlife, and several of the local pueblos that have expressed interest in the project. Sorry. Okay, there I am, sorry. In preparing the environmental assessment, we conducted a number of technical studies, including cultural resources, water resources, biology, noise, visual impacts, hazardous materials. And we also did agency consultation and other public involvement. As Wyatt mentioned, the project's been going on for more than twenty years, and there's been a lot of input over the years into the project design and concepts, as well as the environmental process. So, the EA here discusses the project history, the purpose and need, the alternatives that were considered, and the preferred concepts, and it focuses on the relevant environmental factors, which, because this is a public hearing for the environmental assessment, I'm gonna go through in a little bit more detail in the next slides. Our expectation is, after the public hearing, we've received and analyzed comments, the Federal Highway Administration will issue a finding of no significant impact or a Fonzie, which will allow the project to go forward to construction. So, let me just go through some of these topics. Land use, the project occurs sort of on the edge of the urban and rural area. In the alignment studies, efforts were made to avoid highly-developed areas and sort of wrap around on the edge of development. The project is anticipated to encourage development and growth, some of which in the area has been planned for more than twenty years. The project is generally consistent with local land use plans and transportation plans. The project will directly impact some farmland, and it's likely it will encourage conversion of other farmlands to development. The irrigation systems, farmland access, and other farm infrastructure will be maintained by the project. Socioeconomic factors include a variety of things. In general, the project will encourage accessibility and access. It's not going to split neighborhoods or create a barrier to access between existing neighborhoods. And it's not expected to have disproportionate or adverse impacts to minority populations, low-income or minority populations, which is the environmental justice consideration. In general, the benefits of the project will be experienced by the whole community, the entire region. As Wyatt mentioned, we have gone through a right-of-way process, acquisition of the right-of-way in the corridor, and that has complied with the Federal Uniform Relocation and Real Property Acquisition Act, which ensures equitable treatment to property owners and also provides assistance for relocations. There will be some visual impacts. This is going to be a new large-scale element in the visual environment. There'll be lighting at night. There will be some visual impacts. Aesthetic enhancements are included in the project to mitigate these impacts. Economic impacts, the project will reduce congestion and improve regional mobility, reduce congestion on New Mexico Six. Generally, a project like this of over $150 million generates jobs, wages, business sales, economic multipliers, possible new building in the area, and it likely will increase land values and property taxes. Multimodal transportation is a part of any federal project. We are providing a new east-west corridor from New Mexico 47 across the river to I-25 with connections to north-south trails, linking to the Railrunner Station in New Mexico Six, and there will also be access into the trails in the river channel. Air quality, this area is an attainment for all air quality pollutants that are regulated under state and federal law. In general, on a regional basis, the project will reduce travel time, increase average speed on the network, and reduce, which have the result of reducing carbon monoxide and greenhouse gas emissions, just if the transportation system is operating more efficiently and there aren't queues of idling vehicles, there's less emissions. Noise impacts, we did a fairly extensive noise study using the Federal Highway Administration's traffic noise model. We looked at existing levels, and we used the model to predict future levels. Most of the development along the corridor is far enough back, so it will not experience noise impacts. However, there are several areas that will experience impacts along I-25. That area already has high noise levels. And then in the area along Chamisol and Desert Flower avenues. As part of the analysis, we developed some noise wall concepts in these areas. If you could recognize where we are, but on the left is the new interchange. The yellow line is a noise wall along the northbound ramp. That's a fairly large wall, about fourteen feet. On the right is the Chamisol Desert Flower area. The yellow line sort of wraps around the neighborhood. That is a fairly small wall of about six feet. And that will achieve the Federal Highway Administration's noise reduction criteria, and we are recommending that it be built, and it is included in the design. We also looked at water resources and natural resources. The bridge pier construction will permanently impact a very small area of the river, including some wetlands, which are regulated under the Clean Water Act. It's a very small area, and this figure shows it. It's about .017 acre. And those are the piers in the river channel. There will also be construction-related impacts, and that's the larger turquoise line. That's the footprint of construction. Those will be temporary impacts, and we have included a whole variety of measures to protect the wetlands and protect the water quality during construction. And I won't go into those. But as part of this process, we are required to get a Section 404 permit under the Clean Water Act from the US Army Corps of Engineers and several other permits related to changes in the floodplain area. Biological impacts include a clear zone of about two hundred feet where the bridge will be. We need to have a permanent clear zone in there, and that will require removing about 216 cottonwoods and about seventy-two willows or willow clumps. The river channel area is habitat for southwestern willow flycatcher, yellow-billed cuckoo, and Rio Grande silvery minnow, which are endangered species, protected under the Endangered Species Act. We've gone through a formal process of Section 7 consultation with US Fish and Wildlife under the Endangered Species Act. And as a result of that, we've come up with a fairly extensive commitment for mitigation measures. I guess the most important of these is one-time allocation of water rights to protect the minnow and some timing measures for construction to avoid impacts to migratory birds, and replacement of the trees at a seven-to-one ratio at an off-site location. And all of that is detailed in the environmental assessment and the biological assessment that Fish and Wildlife, you know, another one of these big monsters, that they have issued for the project. Floodplain, the majority of the valley is in the floodplain, mainly because the levees along the river are not engineered levees. Our project, the proposed project will be elevated slightly above most of the existing terrain, and it will capture and store runoff within the right-of-way in ponds. In our cultural resource investigation, we found a couple of archaeological sites, some linear features, meaning the railroad and the ditch, ditches, some historic buildings and some minor features. Based on consultation with the State Historic Preservation Office, the village and DOT and FHWA are committed to mitigating one of the archaeological sites. And we have developed a memorandum of understanding with all of the affected agencies that will accomplish mitigating the sites, the site, the single site, and no other measures are required. We did go through consultation with a whole number of tribes. Isleta, Akama, and Laguna expressed interest in being consulting parties, and we are involving them in the project as we go forward. There were no Indian trust lands affected by the project, but that's a category that the Bureau of REC required or requested that we look at. Other issues include hazardous materials. We did an investigation, there are some minor agricultural residues and possible things like asbestos in several of the buildings that will be relocated. Those will be addressed before construction takes place. Section 4F applies to, for federal highway projects. Apply some special requirements for parklands and recreational areas and wildlife refuge, refuges, refuges, and historic properties. For this project, a small area of the Los Lunas Sports property will be impacted. We've gone through evaluation with federal highways, and the village and federal highways and the DOT have determined that it's a de minimis or minor impact, and no further measures are required. And finally, construction impacts. Most of the construction will be offline, because it's a new facility, except at the major intersections. So, it should not, you know, create widespread congestion and delays on existing facilities, you know, except for when, like, intersections like 314 are being reconstructed. And I think, as I mentioned, in the river channel, work will be done during low-flow in the river. And there are a whole list of provisions to protect the river, to protect the habitat down there, that will be implemented during construction. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Wyatt. As he mentioned, it's been a long circuitous route over the past twenty-three years or whatever. We've had lots of public input, and this is one more opportunity for public input, so we look forward to your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So, what I'm gonna do now is play a video of where the new roadway is going to be located. This is a drone video, and I'm just gonna kind of talk through some of the aspects of where things are. I would typically pause it, but I'm afraid if I push something wrong, it's gonna stop it. But we'll have time to go back, and then we also have some other things to look at, and I'll talk you through the entire project. So, as we're starting here, this is on I-25, we are looking north. The new interchange will be located right here in this low spot. We will cross under I-25, and we will continue towards the east. So, as we move towards the east, the new road's gonna be about where my cursor is, following the existing Morris alignment. Sickler is gonna be realigned to the prison entrance. And so, we're gonna continue along here. And then, right in this area, we're gonna push to the south, and we're gonna parallel the existing Morris Road. So, the existing Morris Road will continue to provide access to all the homes that are located along the north side and Sean Drive and some of those other roads. And that'll be the access point to all of these farm fields and the children, youth, and families down here further. All of our road, as John mentioned, is offset, so this will not have really any impact to people traveling along Morris Road. As we continue to the east, again, we're offset. As we approach the courthouse here, you'll see it in the next video, or next slides. And we start to curve back in, so that we tie into New Mexico 314, just to the north of its existing location. So, we'll go through the sports park, which I think now is a movie theater. And this is just kind of showing you 314, 314, we're not really changing much. We're widening the medians a little bit, extending the left-turn lanes, but New Mexico 314 largely stays the way it is. This is a little bit dated, we know that there is now the multi-use trail along New Mexico 314 on both sides. As we continue to the east, we're gonna be to the north side of Morris Road, and then we're gonna take kind of an S-curve here, sweeping through here before going between the village's wastewater treatment plant and this Chamisa area here, kind of over these ponds, before we will cross over the river. The new bridge will span from levee to levee over the river, so that we do not create a choke point or raise the high-water mark in the river. As John mentioned, we will have some clearing in the river to allow for construction access and maintenance along the bridge. As we come back to the east side of the river, we will cross Edile Road just to the north of Jason Drive. So, this is Jason, our new road is over here. And then we will go across the Edile Dairy here, which we've acquired the property. We will be north of his lagoons that are located here, kind of through where these trees are located, kind of sandwiched between the barn and those lagoons. And then we continue across this farmland. As John mentioned, we will maintain all of the existing irrigation facilities. We have coordinated with MRGCD throughout this to work on permits. I think there's twenty-two crossings that we're having. And then we tie into New Mexico 47 at Hyde Lane. And at this location, we're gonna do what's called a high-T intersection, and I'll explain that a little bit more in detail in just a few minutes. So, what I'm gonna do now is just kind of show you the layout of what this is gonna look like. I think that gives you a picture of where it's gonna be, but this maybe kind of helps walk through it. So, at the interchange, where again, we're about a mile south of the existing New Mexico Six interchange, and we are putting in what is known as a standard diamond interchange. So, you'll be able to get off the interstate, come to a signalized intersection, turn left to go down the new Los Lunas Boulevard, or continue through to get back on the interstate southbound. We do not currently have anything going to the west. That may be a future connection that may be done by a developer at a future time, but we do not include anything to the west. Southbound traffic, they will also have their own off-ramp, come to a signalized intersection, where then they can turn right. They could go left, I don't really know where you're gonna go. Turn around and go back to Berlin, maybe. And then, as we get back on the new corridor, one of the things that we're doing is we're trying to access, control this corridor as much as possible. We don't want lots of driveways, we want it to be a mover of traffic and make it safer that way. So, Camelot Drive for Camelot Boulevard, which currently ties into Morris Road right here, is gonna be relocated. So, you can see Camelot is now gonna have a series of curves that'll tie into Sickler, and Sickler is gonna be realigned to align with the prison entrance. So, we have a standard intersection that'll be located here. At this location, the prison will have concrete wall barrier to protect anybody from running into the prison. It's also going to have a fourteen-foot wall to keep people from trying to throw stuff over into the prison facility. As John mentioned before, we also have a sound wall that'll run parallel to I-25 along this northbound on-ramp. And that'll be about fourteen feet high as well. The existing Morris Road here will connect to Sickler and Camelot, so there'll be another intersection here where all of the local traffic will still be able to use the existing Morris Road to access all of their homes and Sean Drive. So, I'm gonna show you now, I think, as a rendering. So I'm going to show you now, I think, is a rendering of what the interchange is going to look like. It's the same thing that's out in the hallway. We do have, you can see here, we're going to have two bridges that'll carry, this one is the northbound traffic over the new corridor. And this will carry southbound traffic over the new corridor. You can see on here in this first phase, we are building one lane in each direction. And we are building a multi-use path. I'll talk about some of the locations where we're building this full four lanes as we move through here. But at this location, we don't have to adjust the grade of the interstate at all. And this is really one area from a economic standpoint where there's a lot of material for fill that we're utilizing throughout the entire corridor to help balance our earthwork. So as we move further to the east, you can see Morris Road to the north, our new corridor is offset to the south. And this is kind of generally what it looks like here as we go by the prison. There's a dedicated right turn lane into the prison, dedicated left turn lane onto Sickler. So you can access Camelot or Morris Road. As we continue to the east, you can see CYFD facility here, the existing Morris Road, which will provide all of that access. And then as we get close to New Mexico three fourteen, we'll have another intersection. That intersection will provide access to the district court. So their current access is located about here and it'll move to the west along with the access to the village's sports complex and Morris Road. At New Mexico three fourteen here, we also cross the railroad tracks. That'll be an at-grade crossing, which I think you will see in just a moment. Also want to note here that Juan Pareja, which is a road running north-south that ties into Morris Road, will have a cul-de-sac here. And so you won't have access directly onto the new Los Lunas Boulevard at this location anymore. So you'll be able to see here kind of what this new intersection is going to look like. New Mexico three fourteen is a location that we are going to build in its entirety in this first phase. So the signals will be built to their first, to their full lengths. The number of lanes on the corridor, you can see here, it's going to be two lanes in each direction with various turn lanes. The trail is going to be built out, the train crossing, all of that's getting built in this initial phase. With this train crossing, you can see we do have the pedestrian arms. So this will be similar to Courthouse Road where there's pedestrian gates along with vehicular gates. And there's also gates in both directions so that at some point this could be classified as a quiet crossing. It's not going to be done quite with this project, but it does allow for that in the future. As we move towards the east, we do cross Los Lentis. This will be an at-grade location. Los Lentis will be a stop condition. So there'll be stop signs on Los Lentis where the new corridor will not stop. At this location, we start to curve to the south and we begin to climb up because we are going to span over the top of the river. So we do have access to the wastewater treatment plant from a road here. We're also putting in a box culvert for access underneath the new roadway. We have access for MRGCD and the levees and the core on both sides of the river through box culverts. And then we maintain the ditches and drains along this system as well. As I mentioned, we do have this bridge. You can see this little bit of a gray area. It spans from levee to levee. So it's about nineteen spans and a little over two thousand feet long. Here's a look at the bridge. This isn't also a location that we are building this full width. We're building four lanes on the bridge with the center median, the multi-use path on the north side. The multi-use path will also include places for people to overlook the river. So there's about an eight-foot space for people to stop, enjoy the views before they continue along their path on the multi-use trail. As we continue to the east side, we touched down, here's Jason Road. We're just to the north of Jason. We touched down, we have an at-grade crossing of Edile. Again, Edile, like Los Lentis, will be a stop condition. At this, at this time, it doesn't warrant a signal. So at this location, we have a dedicated left turn lane in all directions as well as the through lanes. And then as we continue to the, here's another view of the, the bridge. As we cross the river. And then as we continue to the east, you can see we have a planned access point for the future that is part of the RAC policy. We have a couple of access points to a couple of residents that do not have access once this corridor is built. And then we tie into New Mexico three fourteen, New Mexico three four, excuse me, New Mexico forty-seven. I apologize. So at New Mexico forty-seven, this is also a location, we are building this full, full and complete. So there will be no changes to this once we are done. New Mexico forty-seven will be what's called a high T intersection. I think you'll be able to see it in one of these next renderings. So in this location, if you're traveling northbound on New Mexico forty-seven, you will be able to just continually free flow through the signal. You can see there's kind of a raised median located along here. That'll keep traffic moving. If you're coming to a left turn, you'll have a signal. If you're moving in any other direction, you'll have a, a traffic signal. So it just helps free that movement up a little bit and make traffic flow a little bit more efficiently through this location. So you're probably wondering, how much does this cost? And the answer is a lot. So the estimated construction cost of the entire project is two hundred and thirty-four million dollars. That's full four lanes throughout. Unfortunately, we don't have that much money. So we have a hundred and fifty-four million. So as I mentioned before, we're, we've cut this back a little bit to a phase one. So phase one will include full river bridge, full intersection at New Mexico three fourteen, full intersection at New Mexico forty-seven, full interchange, and then one lane in each direction with a multi-use trail. And that's going to cost about a hundred and thirty-nine million. We have about five million in contingencies. And then to get it built, we have a bunch of inspectors and construction management that's going to have about a ten million dollar price tag. So that brings us in right at budget. Hopefully our bids come in under that. We can add a little bit more paving. So that's our, our goal. So here's generally what it's going to look like in the future, the way we've got it phased. All of the earthwork will be done for phase two. So really all they have to do is come in right at this edge and just add another lane, just pave another lane. So it should be a much simpler project in the next phase that can be done as funding becomes available. And then eventually in phase two, you can see we'll have two lanes in each direction, the multi-use path and the raised median throughout. So here we are in May twenty twenty-four, starting in twenty twenty-one. I think there's some folks that thought we would never get to this point, but here we are finally. So we plan on having the stamped plans completed this summer. I should have brought the set of plans. There are about thirteen hundred sheets of plans. We'll plan on bidding that this summer with construction starting in the fall of this year. So what I'm going to do now is we're going to have, open it up to comments. We have a microphone that folks are going to walk around with. If you're online, I would ask that you type your comments into the chat and then Aaron's going to relay those to us as we go through. Also, if you haven't signed in, I would ask that you please do that. So we have a record of it. And then due to the number of folks here, we want to make sure we hear from everybody. So if you could kind of limit your time and limit your comments, we would appreciate that just so we can make sure and hear from everybody. Yes. And then when you do speak, we would ask that you would please provide us with your name and your address for the record, just so that we can document everything appropriately.
Hello, my name is Denise Moots and I live in Jubilee. It's forty fifty-one Red River Road. And I hadn't planned to come on the, to the meeting today because I'm very excited about the road. But I have to tell you, I'm glad I came because I'm very disappointed in my city and my councilman and my zoning and in the state of New Mexico. You all say this is to help fire and police and rescue. I live on the west side of I twenty-five. You are doing nothing for me. You are doing nothing to get people to the new hospital that they're planning to build across from my neighborhood. You're still going to force them to get on I twenty-five, to get off to exit six, to go across I twenty-five to get to the hospital. If there is an accident on the bridge on six, you are still forcing me to go up to I forty and come down to get across town. You are doing nothing for my part of town, which is getting a lot of growth and a lot of traffic. We were told that this is going to help the city. This is going to help. Well, it helps three fourteen and across, but what about all of us on the other side? You're going to come up and we're going to have a dead end barrier. So if you have four-wheel drive, you can cross the dirt, go up and get on your road. But if you have a regular vehicle, you still have to get on highway six. And if there's an accident or something, we are still stuck. And like you said, if you go out there at six o'clock, five o'clock from I twenty-five back to Facebook, it's a parking lot. We had hoped that this would, would give us a back way so that we wouldn't have to get on six. But you're not doing anything for us. Thank you.
I appreciate your, your comment and I, I understand your, where you're coming from. I think there is, there's development that's planned to continue this road to the west. Unfortunately, it's not part of this project, but at time it'll connect all the way through, I'm sure.
David McLean, thirty-five Inspiration Drive in Los Lunas. How will construction be phased? Is it going to be like working from west to east? Are there going to be multiple construction projects across the entire corridor? How is that going to be sequenced in?
Okay. So thank you for that. So the question, I don't know if anybody heard it, everybody heard it was how will the construction be phased? So we have a suggested sequence of construction that we have proposed in the plans. And in that, we shift traffic to the southbound lanes of I twenty-five and construct the northbound bridge. That allows us to have the material necessary to build a large piece of the west side. Along with that, one of our critical path items is going to be construction of the river bridge. Due to timing, high water flows and things like that, that's something that we anticipate will take about three years to complete. What we have phased or shown in our plans for phasing is that they would build that bridge starting on day one. And then it would take basically throughout the entire period. But what we're doing throughout the rest of the project is we will build the interchange, we'll build the northbound bridge first, switch traffic on to that, then have access to the material that is on the west side of I twenty-five to use that material throughout the rest of the project. So that's generally the phasing, but the critical path is really the bridge in the river.
Hi, David Hammond, seventeen East West Drive, Los Lunas. A quick question. First, I think this will really, really improve congestion on six. I understand west of I twenty-five, but if you haven't come down six in the afternoon or tried to get across the one bridge, this will really do wonders. My first, my question though is how many stoplights do you think will be on that boulevard?
So currently in our plans, we will have a stoplight at New Mexico forty-seven. We will have a stoplight at New Mexico three fourteen and then a stoplight at the interchange. So other than that, it should be free flowing as traffic continues to develop and grow in the area. There may be traffic signals that are warranted at Los Lentis and Edile, but currently they are not warranted.
My name is Richard Lovato and I have a question now. Obviously, this is a huge project. I'd like to know if it's going to be multiple contractors building this project.
So the way we have the plans now, and we are going to bid the contract as one individual contractor will be awarded. How they sub that out will be up to them, but it one, will be one single award for this initial phase, phase from the village.
Hello, Richard Fernandez. Fourteen Jason Road. Looking at your noise study, it looks to me that Jason Road is left out of the noise study as far as the sound barrier vaults. There's homes that are directly on Jason Road and it's in my home specific, it's going to go right behind my backyard.
Where, where is your home? Can, can you, or where is that area? Can you point that out?
Would be if you're coming west on Jason Road, right where it curves at the ditch. Right there.
We found that
There's homes up and down there, right there.
Most of those homes in there were far enough back from the alignment that they did not meet the criteria for noise abatement. There is some area on the Edile, what's it called? The Abajo Plan or Los Abajos Plan or something like that. Vacant land now. And we did some modeling at different distances from the center of the road. At two hundred, three hundred, four hundred feet. And that's vacant land, but just as a, as a matter of notice to the, to the developer. We found that at a distance of about two hundred feet from the center line, there would be impacts in the future. An increase of ten decibels. And I'm, I'm not sure how, how far your home is from the alignment.
My property butts up to the, to the project property. And so I'm about a hundred and fifty feet, maybe.
Your home?
About a hundred feet. My house is about a hundred feet to the back end of my property, which is the project start.
Yeah. And from the center line, it would be another forty-five feet or something like that. Well, I can show you the study. We, we did look at homes in there and, and most of them, except the exception I mentioned, were far enough away from the center line that they did not exceed the standard. There's also the, the DOT has, if there are impacts that are identified, their regulations say that we'll consider noise abatement if it's reasonable and feasible and they have, you know, definitions of those. And part of feasible is that noise abatement will cost less than fifty thousand dollars per residence. If you have a single residence, you know, that's adjacent to the highway, you typically have to build a wall that's about four hundred feet. You know, with the center, with the residence centered in that four hundred feet, you know, let's say an eight-foot wall that's four hundred feet. That's going to cost more than fifty thousand dollars. So there, there were residents in, in the study and especially around New Mexico forty-seven where things are a little more packed. That they did exceed the standards, but they did not meet the criteria for, the feasibility criteria for considering noise abatement. And I'm looking at this, I don't think we looked at this one in particular, but I need to go back and take a look at it. Cause we did some, we don't do every single house. We just do some representative, you know, how receiver points in the model that represent typical houses in the area.
Understood. I appreciate the, the explanation. However, there are more than, there's, there's homes that align Jason Road, that entire stretch there. It's not just me. And additionally, you guys also had an intersection at Edile Road. So Edile Road currently is, is it's an autobahn. Yeah. I mean, we, we did have some speed bumps going in. Why they got removed, don't know. But it needs less traffic and speed bumps, not additional traffic, which would be the potential with that intersection there.
Yeah. And I've, I've heard that same comment from, from others tonight that that is a problematic road. And so while it's kind of outside of the scope of this one, I think it's something the village and the county can look at in the future and look at ways that we can address that.
Hi, my name is Kathy Ingram and I live at zero eight Allegra Court. It's in the Ponderosa Farms right off Otero in Orona. Was there any consideration given to those roads that aren't even, we're kind of like Edile. We were not built for a, a large amount of traffic. We do have speed bumps. But if they're coming off of forty-seven, our road goes directly to El Cero at the back of the loop. Where a lot of people go up to El Cero Mission, those places. Was there any consideration given for those roads that aren't like Edile, ready to handle more traffic?
So I think your road is further east of New Mexico forty-seven. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So the alignment study that was done in two thousand and twelve looked at a connection from looked at a connection from the I twenty-five to New Mexico forty-seven. And this was the alignment they selected based off of lots of different factors, environmental impacts, right away impacts, business impacts. And so we didn't look beyond New Mexico forty-seven as part of our scope. I think there's some planning that's being done by the county as to what's to do with this road from here to the east. So that's something that in the future, I know is going to be looked at and planned for. So we can keep you in the loop as that thing starts to develop, so you can have input on that as well. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Joel Falk. I live at six thirty-six Fire Wheel Loop in Desert Sky. My first question is, is why did you not include ozone levels in your air quality studies?
The region is in attainment for ozone and it's had a air quality maintenance plan for some years. There has never been exceedances of the ozone standard. So it's it's not, it's not required by FHW. There's no quantitative modeling that's required for ozone because it's it's not a non-attainment pollutant. Ozone is related to the the emissions of NOx, oxides of nitrogen that react in the atmosphere. Those can increase as speeds increase, but that's not something that's normally done on a project. The modeling is not done on a project specific basis. Rather, it requires a regional model that includes emissions from industry as well as the transportation system. So it's it's essentially pretty impossible to model at a transportation project specific level. And it's not something that has been done or required in the middle Rio Grande planning area.
It sounds like you do not know where to look for it because it's pretty obvious to me. If you go ahead and take a look at Main Street, from going west in the morning, that will probably go down south to the high school. You then have a portion of the traffic going from the high school back to I twenty-five to go south. You run into a problem right there on the bridge to the interchange two oh three. That until that is fixed, you will have higher ozone levels at that interchange. And there's nothing you can do about it until you take care of that bridge. You need to get rid of the pedestrian lanes and lengthen the turn lanes, like I spoke to him earlier. And then you also need to build a separate pedestrian walkway, which is a direct impact from your construction down south.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the comment. I think ozone and carbon monoxide and greenhouse gases, those are all, you know, made worse where there's high levels of congestion. And, you know, we did, we did most of that modeling of that and on a regional basis, the whole system works a little bit better, which should reduce emissions.
It will not work until the bridge is taken care of. There's nothing you can do about it. So now you run into a question, when do you expect the bridge at two oh three to be fixed?
I don't have an answer for that one, but I will hand that over to Wyatt because I don't know the answer to that.
So there is a current project that the DOT is working with the village to improve the New Mexico six I twenty-five interchange. There's some modifications to the ramps there, which will have an impact on the traffic flow there. And then also improve mainly the the problem areas that we've seen there are the the right turns onto I twenty-five northbound and the right turns off of I twenty-five southbound to the west. So we're going to improve those, which should in turn improve left turn movements. And then we talked, I think there's some pedestrian improvements there to to try to lengthen those left turn bays that are over the bridge. So that's, those are all things that are being done. And I know the village has some funding through the DOT to complete that project, and I think that's at about a ninety percent level as well, so.
Also, as other people have spoken here about the west side, west of I twenty-five, I know that a private citizen sent a message to the New Mexico Department of Transportation directly to District Three. To the best of my knowledge, this individual has not received any additional information on this, except to transfer it to an engineer at the time down there. And there were some alternatives discussed as to how to deal with the west side. Because a lot of us do not have the confidence in the city council, the village council, excuse me, to take care of this on their own, it would probably be another twenty year project. So I wouldn't be surprised if more people go and sign a petition to get it done and ignore the village to some extent. And one of the suggestions was to go from highway six in the industrial area and build an extension from that, perhaps to go north to the interchange at two oh nine as to help reduce the overall cost. But I don't know anything about that interchange or anything to that as far as it meeting strength standards.
Okay, yeah, and I I don't know the answer to that either. It's kind of beyond the scope of our project here, so.
Hi, my name is Matthew Torres. I live at five twenty-two Debenaire Drive here in Los Lunas. A couple of questions. Number one, what do you foresee the the average speed limit being on this road? And then the second question unrelated is you've mentioned that the county government may be looking into phase two and what to do as far as this road terminating at highway forty-seven. Do you know if there's any members here from the county that has any information on that? One of the things a lot of people complain about is the access to the east side, the Yano. There's so many speed bumps and everything else, and I don't blame them. You know, people don't want people just speeding through their neighborhoods. But it seems to me it'd be a really good thing for the county to look into extending all the way to Montano Express and relieve a lot of these little roads of all this congestion and speeding that's going on.
Thank you. So to answer your first question, we're we are going to post this road at a speed limit of forty-five. There'll be some locations that it will go down to thirty-five, but generally it's going to be forty-five throughout the entire corridor. And then I don't know that there's any representation from the county here. I know they have received some funding to do a study, to do just what you said. Look at alternative ways to connect from New Mexico forty-seven to the Montano Expressway. So that's something that's, it's in the works for them as well.
Mary Ampore, fourteen Tammy Lee Lane, Los Lunas. So on your Edile Road thing, this was originally a two-phase project and it was going to be done at, it was going to be finished phase one at three fourteen. Then you guys were going to come over. We find out now that it's a one-phase project, you know, that you're going to do the infrastructure for the for the crossing at three fourteen and one lane coming across, correct?
Yes.
You cannot have more people coming out onto Edile Road. We have accidents on there every week. They take fences out every week. We just had a car in the ditch three days ago. And you're going to put more traffic on there. That was not in any of the original plans. That's not what any of us have discussed. And where this comes through is where Los Lunas proper ends and Los Lunas unincorporated starts. And you guys have thought nothing of all of unincorporated Los Lunas. So I want to see what study that he's talking about of it doesn't affect the traffic. It affects the traffic a lot.
So on your comment about the phasing, so the phasing, like you said, was initially to build the road from New Mexico forty-seven across the river to New Mexico three fourteen. Because this project has a cost over fifty million dollars, we had to go through what was called a value engineering study. And that was a week long study where the DOT and the village had an outside consultant come in. They looked at ways of saving money and making this work more efficiently. And so through that study was the re-phasing, and that was largely due to the earthwork and the movement of traffic. So if we were to build the road from New Mexico forty-seven just to New Mexico three fourteen, you don't get that connection. You would push all the traffic to three fourteen and then three fourteen in New Mexico six with bottleneck. Morris Road with bottleneck. Camelot with bottleneck. So along with this cost savings of about six to eight million dollars for earthwork, the phasing was changed through that VE process. And so that's really why the that was the driving factor in the change of the phasing. The connection to Edile, as it's shown, has been the way that it was shown from the the study that was completed in two thousand and twelve. So the only difference is we're building the entire road as opposed to a segment of it. About Edile connection. So
I sat on the committee in two thousand and nine on all this. So that's not the way it was originally designed.
Okay, I I apologize, I'm not aware of that. When we started the project, that's what it was given to us as.
Because it's a big problem for, I mean, the wrecks down there are crazy. And since the bridge collapsed, people figured out how to go down Edile and it's been even busier. And nobody wants to address that problem, but we have to address that problem. Vince, Hurfence has been hit three times in the last six months. You know, so but you guys aren't studying any of that. That's a problem.
Jason Peck, ten twenty-one Carnival. I was wondering if you guys have an approximate estimation percentage wise of how much traffic is going to be diverted, especially around peak times? What percentage is going to be rerouted to that other side to get to the to the freeway?
Remember Kayla, I think it was somewhere around thirty-five percent was reduced on New Mexico six. I don't quote me on that, I could look in the report, but it's somewhere along with that, Michael, forty-three percent.
Hi, I'm Kelly Force. I live at fifteen Camino de Las Magnanitas. I've heard you guys talk a lot about Los Lunas City proper, but not Los Lunas unincorporated. It's like if you live in the country, you don't matter. My question is, you are moving, we have moved out here because we want the peace and the quiet. What are you going to do to mitigate light pollution? Are you going to be putting in the proper lights so that the light shine down and not up? Because we moved out here to be able to see the stars. I've been here for eighteen years. So how are you going to help us keep our way of life? How are you going to help us keep our home prices reasonable, so that you're not always jacking up our taxes and stuff? Because you want help paying for this. How are you going to mitigate what's happening to our lives, not just the people who live in the cities? Thank you.
So thank you for that. The only question I can probably really answer to that from an engineering standpoint is the light pollution. So all of our lights will comply with the New Mexico Night Sky Act, so they will have cobra heads that will point down. So they, we are not going to do any high mass lighting, which causes a lot of light pollution on this project. As far as impacts to taxes or things like that, I don't think that's something that I have an answer to for you. So I apologize for that. But from an engineering standpoint, I can tell you the lights will will comply and shouldn't have, should have minimal effect on your ability to see the stars.
Hi, Roy Wordman, eleven Berry Hill. Was any consideration given to directly hook this up to two sixty-three? Instead of dumping out there in the middle?
So I think that was probably something that was looked at in the alignment study that was done in two thousand and twelve. I I personally don't know why that route, as opposed to this one, wasn't selected.
It just seems like a lot of the traffic coming off of there, now we're going to go up Otero Road. And that's a rural, narrow, kids ride bicycles on that road. Is there going to be any way to keep all this traffic from heading up there?
So I think that's going to be something that as we coordinate with the county, I think there's going to be, and I think even on Edile, I think as more traffic's going to get here, we're going to have to work together for enforcement on speeding. Look at, see how we can mitigate some of these issues that you guys have. I know you guys mentioned earlier there was speed bumps on Edile that have been taken out. So there's other ways, engineering ways that we can look at things, but I think enforcement's going to be the biggest thing. If you start writing a lot of tickets, that might slow people down or get them to pick a different route, so.
Hi, good evening. Nice meeting so far. I've been enjoying it, learning a lot. My name is Bobby Uliwari. I live at eleven thirty Desert Flower Avenue. That would be right smack in the middle of Heat and Loop and Chamisa. So at the end of our street on Desert Flower, we've had like probably about four to five mobile homes taken out in that corner, which what I've been hearing was that that was supposed to be some kind of an outlet, and you kind of brought it up just earlier, you touched on it. And then there's Morris Road that's behind us. So I'm Desert Flower, Morris Road behind us. And we're, I'm, I live right in the middle of Desert Flower between Chamisa and Heat and Loop. So you're saying that where the trucks are going in and out of the wastewater plant, that's going to be closed down on Heat and Loop? Is that going to be blocked?
No, sir, it won't. So we're going to maintain that. We're going to put in a box culvert so that those trucks can continue to go through there. So if you can look at the screen here, so here's the the three houses that you're talking about here on the corner.
Okay.
Here's the wastewater treatment plant, and here's their current access that they drive to the wastewater.
Correct. Okay, so I'm right smack in the middle there, right back.
So the, there is a road that will continue through here. We're going to put in a box culvert that will allow those trucks to continue to use that. We're also putting in an alternate alternate access to the wastewater plant for those trucks here. We didn't want to mix the high speed trucks trying to get onto this new corridor with the slow moving trucks.
That's on Chamisa. Is that on Chamisa there where you're pointing out right now?
Well, I can't see where that is. So this, this is, this here is just access to the wastewater plant. It's not access to anything else. So Chamisa will come here and continue to do just like it does today. Heat and Loop will do just like it does today. So really, there is no connection to Chamisa or Heat and Loop to this new corridor at all.
To be an exit of any sort of sign saying, okay, so then, well, if you can remember back from, you know, like I've I've moved out here about ten years ago. And the rumor was that they had bought out those mobile homes there on Chamisa in order to have a quarter there. Was that, was that, was that true or false? I mean, or do you know anything about it?
Three or four on that corner right there.
Lots, empty lots.
That have been purchased by the village before this road. So you can actually see here from this image where one of these, those trailers is located. I think there's one, two, three, four, five of them on that corner that the village has purchased. I think everybody but one has been relocated already. And the village already owns that one house and they have that that
That's being rented.
Is renting, yes, sir.
So, okay, so then you go back a little bit, another couple of mobile homes down. And then you got Morris Road there that's full of dirt, that's that's just existing there. Morris Road, that's that's over there. I was wondering what were they going to do with that?
So Morris Road between three fourteen and Morris?
Wyatt, let me help you out a little bit. If you look at your map, you count about four houses to the north of this new corridor. There's an empty lot. That's what he's talking about.
Right.
This one here?
Yes. That's what he's asking is what's going to happen with that?
Nothing's going to happen with that on this project.
Okay, because I was thinking, I was imagining with everything that was going on, that it was going to be a quarter going that way and then another one going the other way. So it's, because it's a real quiet street there and.
So we're, we're not connecting any access into that, any of those local streets right there.
So, so then, so I I'm not trying to get into anybody's business or anything. But why are those empty lots now when they had homes over there? Did the city buy those? For, for what reason?
For this, for this road is why this, some of those lots I think are just vacant. But the ones that are vacant on the corner, those were purchased by the the village. There I think are one or two that I don't know why they're vacant. They're, they're not village-owned.
So then the road's just going to go right in front of the wastewater plant, right?
Yes.
It's going to be two-lane highway, one-way and two-lane highway the other way with fourteen-foot wall coming our way?
A six-foot wall coming your way.
Six, six-foot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so then, then help me out here. How close to the wastewater building will the road be as it passes by? I mean, it's going to be right in front of it, right?
So.
Pretty close?
It's, so you know how there's the drainage ponds between
Yes.
the mobile home park and the wastewater plant?
Right.
We basically split the road right down the middle of that, those ponds.
Okay, so then you're saying that it's, it's going to be, it's going to be a two-lane highway or a one-way going back and front of the front?
Can you, if you look at this here, you can probably see it a little bit better. So here's Chamisa. As we come through here, so the new road will turn, kind of go to the south and then it'll turn and go to the east. So here's the wastewater treatment plant here to the south. Here's the existing mobile homes to the north and we're wedging the new road between it. So the new road in the full build-out will have two lanes headed east, two lanes headed west, and then the multi-use trail.
Wow, okay, so it's going to be kind of tight over there.
It is a little bit tight, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And it's built up about twenty-five feet in the air, so.
How much was that?
Twenty-five feet.
It's going to be built up?
Yes, sir, because we've got to go over the top of the river.
Oh, wow, okay, now I know where I'm at. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Richard Herrera from one-nine-seven-one-five Highway three fourteen, which is about three and a half miles south of this corridor. And it's not going to impact me much, except the fact that it's going to make it easier to get from Albuquerque to my house. But my concern here is this is still somewhat an agricultural community. There's a lot of agricultural use. And this corridor, one of the things that, one of the big things that was used to get this corridor put through was to relieve the congestion of the agricultural people that needed to cross the river. Now you're building a four-lane road with narrow shoulders and a walkway that by design, you're causing congestion. These hay wagons, swathers, trucks hauling livestock to the sailbar south and, or north, south to Berlin. You're giving them nowhere to go if something happens to their vehicles. You've got a narrow shoulder, two lanes with the, with the wall and the median. These swathers are already eight to twelve-foot wide, so they're already stuck out in the second lane. And if they break down, you stop traffic completely. There's no, I mean, yeah, there's some guys going to force their way around and, and either scrape the wall or on their motorcycle go down the shoulder. But why are you designing this as in an agricultural community to impede the agricultural part of this community?
I don't think we're designing it to impede the agriculture at all. We're designing it to roadway standards. So we have eleven-foot lanes in each direction. I think we end up with a six or eight-foot shoulder in the ultimate configuration that, that we should be able to transport all modes of transportation. We know that the large majority of users of this roadway are going to be a vehicle. There's going to be, you said, there's going to be some folks that are going to drive their swather through there. And I understand that. We, when we, New Mexico six to the meeting, we saw a mower coming down New Mexico six. So we know that's something that's going to happen. So we're planning to build it as wide as we can in the future. Unfortunately, we're about a hundred million dollars short to build the full four lanes. But we're trying to build it in the smartest way we can so that we set ourselves up for the future to build that ultimate configuration where it moves everybody. I know there's going to be a little bit of growing pains and it's going to be a little bit of a struggle at times. But in the ultimate configuration, it should be able to move those. But of course, it's going to be something that's going to be a little bit challenging at times.
Now, when, when we talk about crossing over at Edeal Road, I don't drive that side of the river very much. I have to go through Highway six unfortunately. But is that corridor from the river to forty-seven going to be wide enough for what I just talked about?
In the ultimate, yes, sir, it will be. So in the, in the interim phase, we're going to build the median. We're going to build, I think, a twelve-foot lane, six-foot shoulder. And then it's all going to be graded for that future lane. So if a swather's going down through there and they want to scoot over all the way to the shoulder, it's going to be compacted dirt that they could drive on if they wanted to, if they needed to scoot over. It's not going to be a drop-off, there's not going to be a wall that's going to prevent them from doing that.
So there is still some way, well, we're going through these growing pains because it's, it's going to take.
It's going to take a while, yes.
It's going to take a while. There is a possibility for them to get across the river easier than having to go through Highway six.
Yes, sir. And then it's, and then with that, even in the ultimate configuration, we have the eight-foot shoulder, and then I think we have another fifteen feet beyond that. So we're trying to make this wide so it feels like it's not a narrow little road. Trying to think about the future and how do we move everybody through.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Barbara Springer and I live at fifteen Vista Verity Road. And it's to the, very close to the Highway forty-seven junction. They have bought up a half acre of my land about a year, year ago. And two or three years ago, they started saying that they were starting the project on Highway forty-seven side and going west. But it sounds like from what I'm hearing now that you're starting on the east side. At what point would you be at the Highway forty-seven? Are you coming all the way through or would you be doing some work on both ends at the same time or?
I wish I had an honest answer for you, but I don't. So what we, as the engineers, have planned is probably different than what a contractor is going to build. So we have suggested that a sequence of construction where they have available earthwork. They have the dirt they need to build the roadway. There may be, from a construction standpoint, until we have a contractor on board, they may change things up. But there will be one contractor that will build the entire project from the interstate to New Mexico forty-seven.
So probably just starting at one end and going across, so they probably won't.
Potentially, yes, ma'am, but I, I don't, I don't have that a hundred, I can't give you an honest hundred percent answer.
Hi there, Gary Sullivan, I live Los Chavez. So for the zoning, especially from the freeway to forty-seven, are you going to have commercial zoning up and down the road there on Morris? So are there going to be eventually gas stations or is that still zoned for residential? And that's going to completely change the outlook of that, which is, it's a pretty wide area, yes, that's pretty good. But I mean, I just want to know what the zoning will be.
So as of right now, the roadway is a limited access corridor. There are only specific locations that have approved access points. And then as far as changes to zoning, that is something that will have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and get petitions to be changed.
Oh, and I'll, I'll address that just a little further from the, the part of the right, part of the adjacent property. As you all know, some of you are here from the village of Los Lunas Municipal. And some of you are here from unincorporated Los Lunas. The road abuts property that is in both jurisdictions. And so Los Lunas itself has a, you know, certain zoning that's already been approved. There's no zone changes that are being pursued through this corridor project. And as it might not be a surprise, there's so much effort to get to this point with building the road that we'll have to, we'll have a long time in the construction process to figure out if we're looking at any zoning. It is intended to be a limited access corridor. We do understand that there will be development pressure around those intersections. And so that may be something that needs to be looked at so that it's addressed in a, a clear and straightforward manner. There is a significant portion of the adjacent property, though, that is in unincorporated Valencia County. And so that would be, at this point, on the county's lead to look at if they're going to pursue any zone changes or facilitate any requests by property owners to change their zone.
It's Dan Solis and I live in Rancho Valencia. I've got some questions about Camelot Boulevard. That is very congested. In fact, we've got a, a speed car or a speed enforcement car there. And it's there every week. It was put there since the beginning of the speed enforcement. Along Camelot, there's also Valley View, Crest View. There's thousands of houses there. Tell me how, explain to me how vehicle traffic off of Camelot is going to transition and get on to northbound and southbound Interstate twenty-five. Can you put it back up there?
Yes, sir, so you can see it here now. So here's Camelot. And so if you want to exit the subdivision here, you will take Camelot. You'll continue around here.
And stop there?
Yes, sir, there'll be a stop sign here at Sickler.
There's a stop sign, and then from there, where do we go?
Then you'll go down towards the prison.
And there's another stop sign there?
Yes, sir, and then you will be able to go, turn right, go up to here where there's a traffic signal. You can go north to Albuquerque. If you go through, you could go to this traffic signal, go south to Berlin.
I think you're going to have a lot of congestion at those two stop signs. But my concern is, I can just see right next to the prison there, a lady at ten o'clock at night with a carload of kids, stopped there facing a prison. That is not a good, a, a, a good idea. The other thing is that you talked about the environment, all these other things that pollute the air. Why haven't we put roundabouts there so that traffic does not stop? I mean, this isn't rocket science. They're putting them all over Albuquerque, all over the state, all over the country. What are you going to do? Wait till you have a problem there and then wait ten more years? And then it's going to cost ten times more to build those out? This is, this just doesn't make sense.
So from a roundabout perspective, because this is a four-lane facility, multi-lane roundabouts are a little bit more confusing, a little bit harder to traverse. And then also, we, when we did our traffic modeling, it just didn't quite hit that threshold to warrant something that's significant. So this is a location that, as things continue to develop, we know that this will be a location that could potential have, potentially have a traffic signal as traffic increases on Sickler itself. But as of right now, it's just like Edeal, Los Lentis, just doesn't quite hit that threshold.
Well, I disagree because there's locations within the country. For example, Carmel, Indiana is one. They have a hundred and thirty roundabouts and one signalized intersection. Cuts down on pollution? Major. You don't have to maintain those intersections. And it's also cut, cut down on traffic accidents. So I wish you would reconsider doing something about that. So we don't have to stop there and look around like a bunch of idiots at ten o'clock at night waiting and there's nobody around.
Thank you.
Vicky Padeo, seventy, Sean Lane. Just a point of clarification on the zoning. Would you repeat that?
Um, yes, but I did give a pretty long-winded answer. Is there a particular point that you'd like me to cover most?
Because a lot of our residents, from the interchange that's going to take place all the way down to Morris Road, going down Sean and that whole section there and including Camelot and that whole area there.
Yeah.
As you get all the way down to Highway three fourteen. You've got, I can sympathize with the agricultural people and the fact that they're not in the incorporated area. And the reason I can is because we have a piece right smack in the middle that is in the county.
Yeah.
And I thought I heard you say that there have been no zoning requests. Is that correct?
To, to the village of Los Lunas, we don't have any zoning, zone changes that are planned or requested along the new corridor. In the county, I am aware that there are some, there are some zoning requests, but I can't speak for the county because I actually don't know the full scope of everything that's been requested in the county. But I do know what you're talking about because there are some requests there.
And therein lies the problem. Because you've got multiple residents that are affected in that whole area where you have county zoning.
Yes.
And we've been fighting it since twenty-two. So our concern is both ends not knowing what is going on in that area, i.e. the village and the county. Are you following me?
Yes, I understand what you're saying. You're saying you'd, you'd like to see that, when I spoke and said that we don't have any zoning requests. I should clarify, I'm an employee of the village of Los Lunas. So Los Lunas, in our incorporated area, does not have any zone change requests. We do know, the county does notify us when they have zoning requests that come before the commission. We get the notice of public hearing like anybody else. We don't always get a report back on the outcome. We do communicate with the county, they're a project partner in this, in this project. But the zoning is, it's a, it's an issue that we know there could be development pressures that happen along the road when the road is built. But right now, we're not, we aren't seeking a zoning effort as any governments with this project because the, the road effort is really the thing that we're focusing on right now.
And that's our concern.
Yes.
Because this is sold as a transportation corridor.
Yes.
Not a commercial corridor. Is that correct?
Yes, this will be, this is a limited access road.
And that's our concern.
Yes.
Because they're trying to make it a commercial corridor. And if you get that, then your environmental impact statement is compromised to the max regionally. Because it's not only compromised east of the, of the freeway, it's going to affect west of the freeway. Because you've got a piece of land there that isn't incorporated and should be. Because water availability is a major issue for everybody.
Yes.
And if you have commercial development in that area, I assure you that state water, state engineer is going to have a lot to say about that. I.e. the water issue, not to mention all the other infrastructure that needs to take place in the area.
So to just, there's a, the scope of what you brought up is pretty broad and a lot of it is really outside. The water rights issue for commercial development is pretty far outside the scope of this corridor project. It's, it's a related issue, I totally acknowledge. But just to keep it within the realm of this project, even if there are commercial pressures that are looking at land that's adjacent to the road, the road is still a limited access corridor. And the driveways onto the road will not, there will not be additional driveway permits that are accessing the road beyond what's already approved in the limited access corridor. And I would have to, if the, you know, if commercial properties being developed in proximity to the road are an impact on the environmental statement, then I would have to turn that over to our environmental consultant.
I, I just, and I'll close with this. There is going to be a major environmental impact. And that's why I brought it up. Because if the coordination isn't taking place between the village and the county, then we're going to have a major issue. And that's my point for the environment.
Thank you.
Sonia Sana, twenty forty-nine. Twenty forty-nine Castillo Drive. My house is situated on the west side of I-25 and I-25 is right, right next to my house. I've had two cars come off the freeway into my backyard over the last ten years, to the point to where now I don't even want to go to the backyard. And if you're traveling northbound on I-25, the space from the freeway to my house is very narrow compared to where it's at, even by the prison or by the state building a little bit further. the space from the freeway to my house is very narrow compared to where it's at even by the prison or by the state building a little bit further north. So my question is, is there going to be some sort of barriers that are going to be placed in that area? Because each time I replace the wall, I understand there's no like rebar reinforcement on that wall. It's just a brick wall.
Are you north of New Mexico 6 or south of New Mexico 6?
Oh, gosh. I'm behind Planet Fitness. West of
You're by like Buffalo Wild Wings. Okay. So our project doesn't extend that far. So our project's where the well is, that's on top of the hill on the tank. That's as far as we extend our project. I, I don't know if Luke, if that's something that the district level can look at to see if there's a clear zone issue or something there that needs to be addressed from a highway safety standpoint. I don't know.
Hi, Luke Smith, New Mexico DOT. Yeah, I can talk to, get your information. Talk to District Traffic about this. Make sure that's communicated. See, I'm, I mean, it sounds horrible. What's happened? Yeah.
Hi, I'm Donna Smith. I live at 94 Edile Road. So I guess you know where I'm going with this. I've been here for over 50 years. I've watched this community grow and and Edile Road absolutely trashed. It's, it used to be the place where people wanted to go and wanted to be there and see where both. But anyway, so, so that's bad, that's bad enough. But I want to know, have you had an actual visual on Edile Road? Because it's like a farm road. It's not, it's not a two lane. It's, I mean, it is two lane, but in some areas it's not. I mean, you have to, you know, sneak by people, you know? So number one, I would like to know if that's going to be why, and if so, has that been taken care of? Have you, you know, made, made? Because I have property there. You haven't come and talked to me about anything, which it wouldn't do you any good, but just saying, you know? But that's one. Number two is there, half of Edile is county and half is city. Literally, been there over 50 years. I still don't know who to call. Because it's like you call county and they tell, oh, that's city. You call city, they go, oh, that's county. You know, so that's a problem. So as far as the infrastructure to me is if you have accounted for this, you know, who would you call? County or city? Or how would you do that? So to me, that's a problem, number one. And then the other part is when I had come to some of these meetings before, and maybe that was addressed by this lady, I, it was my understanding that on and off ramp to that, to the freeway was going to be on 314. Sounds to me like you guys have definitely addressed trying to have 314 move well and Highway 6. But let me tell you, Edile's the dumping road here. You know, you've dumped on it and it's not good. You'd literally need to visualize, had to go and look at it, not just on a paper, not on a map. You need to drive it because it is a nightmare and it is, it's just not acceptable. We, we can't accommodate that. And we certainly can't accommodate a four-way stop there. So why not do that flyover thing where it can't be that many feet from 314 to, to just do the flyover thing to where it doesn't disrupt? And it would ease some of that. And we are definitely agriculture. So can you answer any of that rambling?
So number one, I have definitely been on Edile Road. I've driven it multiple times. It's a beautiful area. I've told Kevin, I said, if you ever make me move to Albuquerque, I'm going to buy a house on Edile Road because it's an awesome place. So I, I get your concern from how narrow it is how agricultural area it is. I live in a very similar area in Las Cruces. Narrow roads. And so I get that. And I think from a perspective of our project, we have not done anything to widen Edile Road outside of the limits of this project. We know that this project likely is going to have some impact on the amount of traffic that's on Edile Road. But we're hoping that because now people can quickly get to New Mexico 47, people are now cutting from New Mexico 6, they're cutting through Edile all the way down south on 47. So we're hoping that this new corridor will take those people that are kind of sneaking through, push them all the way to New Mexico 47 so that they go down 47 as opposed to Edile Road. So you're right, we haven't approached you. If you're not within the project limits for property acquisition, that'll be next year's project or something down the road.
When did it go to south? Was, wasn't it at some point to be?
A great separation?
Enter there and then?
Not that I'm aware of and
See, that's the way I, I, the information I had received at meetings I had gone.
Okay.
That's what I, and so it sounded to me like, well, we ran out of money. So, okay, this is what we're going to do.
Right. So I, I know there was a, at one time a talk about a great separation of the railroad tracks and New Mexico 314 that we took out for lots of reasons, funding. It just really wasn't feasible to do it. But I don't know, do you ever remember anything at this location of something being discussed there? And then as far as jurisdiction, the Village of Los Lunas has annexed this new corridor throughout. But as far as where you live on Edile and which side of the stripe you're on, I don't know who to call. I wish I knew the answer to that.
I mean, we can figure that out. We have for years, but, but I mean, what I'm saying is, is there, there are certainly more complications.
Yes, ma'am.
I think me, CI. And, and I think as somebody suggested, drive down there now. There's, one lady's fence has been taken out. She said in six months, I think it's probably been more like four months. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then what happens is, you know, oftentimes they're not caught. And I have replaced my fence and portions of it. I can't even tell you how many times. So it's really sad to hear that now it's going to complicate things. So.
Why did your speed bumps?
Why did they take out our two speed bumps when they had Edile marked off? And now they're gone.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
There's no answer, I guess, because I've pulled, no.
Hi, Christian Hassy, five Magnolia Lane. My question is in regards to your budget. We can all agree that this is a pretty big budget item for the Village of Los Lunas. And I'm sure they have separate funding sources. I see FHWA, New Mexico Department of Transportation County. My question is, is when, when, when your bids come in over budget, over your engineer's estimate, what is the contingency or is there enough money in the coffers to cover that? Or is there ideas of reducing the scope of the work to accommodate what is in the budget?
So Christian, we're going to tell you contractors, be nice to us and bid low. And we're going to be good friends by the end of the job. We'll make your life easy. So I, I think that that's going to be a hard question to answer until we see what those bids really are. It's, that's a hard question for us to answer. Erin, do we have questions online? Okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to transition over to the online questions. We have a number, we have many questions in the chat. I'm going to start, for those of you who are participating virtually, I'm going to start with the first questions that were received and work our way through as many as we can. We'll be answering the questions as they come. And I do apologize, it's very likely that we will not have time for follow-up questions to the chat questions because it's logistically challenging to find the responses in the chat. So to start with, we have Talani Francisco asked very early on in the presentation, how can it be already determined there will be a Fonzie? The NEPA process is not complete yet. The noise and long-term impact on the TES are going to be tremendous. The animals will be forever gone.
Yeah, that's a, there's a lot, a lot to answer that. I mean, we have done a noise study. We have done endangered species studies. And we've gone through the process with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And, you know, we've got a biological opinion that basically says if you do these mitigation measures, then
Folks, while we're in the meeting, we are still running this meeting. So if we can please take outside conversations into the lobby.
So I, rather than repeat everything, the studies that we've done so far show no significant environmental impacts. And that's the basis of that statement. Something may come out of the meeting tonight that will change that, but that is the expectation at this point.
Thank you. Next, we have a, we have a couple that are, I'm going to go through them and note that we probably won't respond because they've been kind of addressed in comments we've already received. We did have Steve and Stephanie Griegego comment, wonderful presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Steve and Stephanie. Terry Hadameo commented, will the corridor ever extend past Highway 47? I think it's been noted a couple of times that that would be a future project undertaken by Valencia County. Arias Foster commented, it was mentioned that there would be minimal impact to air quality. Is this information based on current population? Does the impact study consider population increase?
Yeah, the air quality analysis was based on traffic forecasts that were done for, I believe, 2040, which were based on projections, projections of population and employment into that year. So it was based on future traffic and it looked at, you know, network-wide traffic volumes and operations.
Thank you. DND Geivitz have asked, when will work begin on Highway 6 from I-25 to 314? If we have an answer to that, we'll answer, but that is also outside of the scope of this project. So that is a future DOT project. I do see our consultants shrugging to say, we do not have the answer in this forum. But that is, we note that that is a project DOT would like to answer.
So we've got the design for the project you're asking about. As soon as this project's done, we're, we've got, we'll be looking to program that one. We just don't want the New Mexico 6 project and this one happening at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Zach Ickwald. What are the anticipated impacts to Otero Road as the new highway does not have direct access to the East Mesa area? People will find it very convenient to run down Otero Road, a small residential road, rather than backtracking or taking the north-south loops. There's already a high volume of traffic. I believe that one has been addressed a few times in this presentation. So thank you, Zach. Will Chavez notes, in contrast to other comments in person, I'm just happy there's no roundabouts. Maria Klee has notes, has your study looked at what roads the traffic leaving Highway 47 will take to travel further east? It's been noted that 47 was the eastern scope of study for the project. Sandra Watts has questioned, a question about access of all northbound turns from Camelot to Sean Drive. We currently have access to all. Also, the map doesn't represent the potential commercial development just east of Sean Drive. Box stores, strip business with restaurants plus 100 plus homes. There's more to that than, there's, in addition to the zoning question that was posed earlier. So I'll turn that to Wyatt.
Okay, so one of the things with this project, how we offset the roadway to the south was that we leave the existing Morris Road in place. And so any access to that development that would occur west or east of Sean Drive would access directly to the existing Morris Road. And then they would not have direct access to this corridor. They would access the corridor through Sickler or down by New Mexico 314. So direct access wouldn't be off of this roadway.
Thank you. Yvette H. has noted, if the Village of Los Lunas keeps allowing large corporations like Facebook to build here, the corporations should be required to help with funding for roads to access their businesses if they want to get approved to build here. Also, is there going to be a plan for a frontage road, especially on the west side of I-25, to get on the freeway? And I can address the first part of this question. And which is, there are, there are requirements for traffic improvements and road improvements when we have large employers such as Facebook or Meta or Amazon, where they are required to provide improvements to the road and also any additional public infrastructure that's going to be needed to access their facilities. That is part of the Village of Los Lunas's development requirements. So there are, there are frequently a significant amount of funding that is put towards those offsite investments. And I'll hand it over for the frontage road question.
So as far as the frontage road, I don't believe there's anything currently planned as far as something to be done by the NMDOT. I know there's some developments within Feining Ranch that are planned to make that connection, but nothing that's done by the village or DOT.
Hey, thank you. We have a follow-up from Sandra Watts, which says, in a follow-up, would all roads have access to interstate on and off ramps? There is a high potential to recreate a west-side experience between 25 and 314. Look at Blynn, same problem, but three times of road to left exit to work with versus likely less than half a mile. I'm not, and I'm not totally sure I understand the question, but I think that may have been addressed by the Morris Road comments.
Yeah, so we're, we're access controlled. The only places you'll be able to access anything off of this new road would be Sickler between 314 and the interstate.
Thank you. Rosio Hadameo has posted, we need this corridor. Emergency vehicles need to be able to have another route to respond. People start using small neighborhood roads to get off the main road. These are the growing pains of a city that has a population that is growing. We need to start somewhere. This has gone on too long where we only have one road. Thank you for your support, Mr. Hadameo. Ed Martinez has commented our Ed Martinez has commented, our home is located on the southwest corner of the 47 and Los Lunas corridor. The parcel is a long, narrow lot adjacent to Hyde Lane. The home is located closer to 47 with agriculture, two acres on the west end. There are currently two access points off of Hyde Lane. Why was there not a plan to retain Hyde Lane for access to the properties? In an email from Wyatt, the suggestion is that we create a driveway with two hard turns directly through our front yard and backyard for access to the agricultural field. This is not a reasonable suggestion. How do I go about formally filing a request for review and reasonable remediation?
So it seems like it's a question about access onto 47 and Wyatt, you probably know more about the parcel and question than I do. So
So it's the corner of 47 and this new project.
So are we realigning access for this owner?
So the access does not change. There is an access off of Morris or Hyde Lane currently. Let's see if I can find it. That one there. So it's this, this parcel here.
Okay.
Their access right here off of New Mexico 47 is being reconstructed. There is a gate located somewhere here that's just too close to the intersection.
Okay.
And it's not permitted on the rack. So there, we, we had discussions with the property owners about ways to potentially
That's out of my right of way.
continually access their parcel. So it's something we've discussed with them several times.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have, I, I am, there are a couple of you virtually who have submitted a couple of short comments that I am skipping because they intend we're, you know, running short on time and they're not questions. So I'm trying to get to questions. We have Terry Hadameo asks, why not have on-ramps instead of stop signs from Camelot?
Well, there's a couple of reasons, too close to the interstate to have actual on and off ramps. To do actual on and off ramps, you would need a great separation. And really, there's not just enough traffic to warrant such an interchange, intersection.
Thank you. And that is the end of our online comments.
Thank you, Aaron. And I know there are a couple more in here that have had some questions.
Hi, Denise Moots again, 4051 Red River. You used a term earlier when you were talking about the wastewater, used a box something? Does that go under the road? You said there was a, you were doing a new on, a new entrance, and then you said there was a box something, and I don't know what that means.
So it's a box culvert is what it is. And essentially, it's a, it's 14 feet wide by 14 feet tall. And it just allows, basically as a bridge, to drive underneath.
Good evening, my name is Emily Irwin. I live at 3268 Highway 47, unfortunately. So if you could please move to that slide. I have a question about... Okay, so when, so we're right there, we're going to be, we're just south of where the, south. No, no, so we're up where the, the new interchange proposal is, right in that area, where it's dark, dark, dark colored there. So when we come out of our property, and there's two or three of us that are going to be affected by this, we have to turn south now. So we're going to come out south and we're immediately going to try to get in that left lane. And then we're going to try to turn a U-turn. So I guess I feel like I'm going to probably get rear-ended and killed there, to be honest, because people will come through the light and they're all going to be jockeying because that turns into, you know, 47 goes into a single lane. So they're already going pretty fast through there, trust me. So I'm going to need, and several of us are going to need to get into that left lane. And then we're going to stop and try to turn to go north. And so I guess, I wonder if that's really been looked at when we come out of our properties in the morning and in the evening when there's rush hours? And I guess for the, the safety of a few of us that are there. And I think there's going to, I mean, I think it's probably a common statement for anybody that's in that area that are going to have to be either forced to go north or to go south.
Yeah, that's, that's something that happens, unfortunately, a lot of intersections. When you do access control, one of the things that we try to do to reduce conflict points is we put in a raised median to force traffic to turn right, to make a dedicated U-turn at some location. Statistically, that's a safer movement. I know it's a little uncharacteristic, a little unorthodox and a little bit out of way traffic. So the good thing that you're going to have is you are now going to have that light that will stop traffic completely on New Mexico 47. Whereas right now, it's, I've been out there at rush hour, it's wild. So at least now you'll get a little bit of a break in that queue where you can make that movement. But it's definitely going to be an inconvenience.
Dedicated right now, so you, you can just go north and you bypass that light. So I don't, you know, I guess I'm thinking we're going to be turning into that lane. So we're going to stop traffic eventually. It's, it's going to happen, just because of the configuration, I think.
It's definitely a possibility. It's still going to be two lanes. And so you'll be able to turn, make that U-turn movement. And then I'm assuming you're going to want to go on this new corridor and they get the interstate or potentially...
If we're going to Albertson's now.
Yeah, sure. Just depends on where you're going to want to go. So I think it's a movement that's, it's very doable, it's a little inconvenient. I definitely agree with that.
And then I guess the other, and I could talk offline, that's fine. Well, we can go to somebody else.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, never mind. Spoke too soon.
My name, excuse my voice. My name is Lynn Aker at 166 Edeel Road. I live down from Donna. And if I heard you correctly, the first assessment on Edeel Road with the four-way stop was put forth in 2012, is that correct?
So the first alignment study was completed in 2012. I don't know how the connection to Edeel was done specifically.
Okay. But there's been quite a bit of time since 2012. And I think it's imperative to do a risk analysis of that road, of the conditions of that road, the volume of traffic, to include the structure of that road because you've got village and county. And that road was never designed for the volume to be generated by this new boulevard. That has got to be looked at. That road surface cannot take it. And it cannot take the volume. You've heard about the accidents. Every week, there are accidents. If you load it, there will be more. And I did hear that the budget came in short. So this was pushed off as one of those things that could not be done properly, in my mind, because of budgetary concerns. But you've got to look at the safety scenario on that road.
So we can, we'll talk to the village and the county and see if there's something to study that, that roadway to see if there's improvements that can be done. I want to make a point of clarification as far as the budget goes. There wasn't, as far as the scope of this project improvements to Edeel Road beyond what is shown on here tonight. So because we're over budget to build the full corridor, that didn't impact the geometry or the improvements to Edeel Road, what were considered, so.
I'm thinking with Phase 2, we should take a look at maybe revisiting the signal warrant analyses for Sickler and Edeel. I mean, I think that's just an easy thing to do, yeah.
And Los Lunas. Definitely, as we move forward.
So it won't be happening with this phase, but with Phase 2 with the four-lane build-out, it's definitely part of the analyses that we'll, we'll be looking at.
Mitch Fernandez again on 14 Jason Road. Going to the intersection at Morris and the interstate, the gentleman who sat up here in front of me earlier was speaking about the congestion with the lights. Why not put ramps? At, at the on, at the ramps on and off the interstate, why aren't they ramps versus, where are we putting stoplights? No, right where you come off the interstate, on to Morris.
So there are ramps. So it's going to be essentially like New Mexico 6 where you would come to a stop condition and then turn. Instead of a...
It's like a flyover here, you know?
There's not quite enough traffic to warrant a flyover at this point. There, there might be, yeah, at some point. Yeah, and so it's, those are, it takes a long time from a traffic volume perspective to, to warrant a free-flowing movement such as a flyover, so. Well, yeah, I mean, even, we modeled out to 2040, we're not even close to hitting that threshold.
Hi, again, Bob Ullery. When you had explained to me again, the wastewater plant, going east, say, for instance, the roads going in front of the wastewater plant. And I'm trying to figure out, how far is the river from there? Is it about a quarter of a mile going, going east where the bridge would start?
So the wastewater plant is actually right next to the river. It's probably, active channel is probably 1,500 feet maybe from the wastewater plant. The levee is probably 200 or 300 feet from the wastewater treatment plant. So it's, it's really pretty close to it.
And now, now you're saying that the bridge is going to go up about how many feet?
I think it's about 25, is that how high?
So, okay, I'm trying to picture this. So the way I see it, like when I drive up to the wastewater plant where I get in on heat and loop, everything is like even there. So you're saying going east, it's going to start climbing up? And that's just going to be a few hundred feet from, from the plant itself?
But actually, see here on this graphic that's on the screen. So this is about where, yeah, those empty lots are on that trailer park.
Yeah, right, okay.
So you can see how, as we turn that corner, we start to climb. So it starts to go up in elevation. So you can see the tops of the houses here. And we're up above the tops of those houses.
Okay, okay, so where is the wastewater plant there?
The wastewater plant.
You can point that.
Right, oops. Right here. It's the wastewater plant.
Where at? I can't, but there, okay, I got you.
Right there.
Okay, I got you, okay, got you, okay. And then, and then again, desert flowers, just, just, just right in front of it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then it starts going up, okay. Okay, and then go, it went over my head now, the project with all these monies that you were speaking about earlier, where are these funds coming from? Are we going to be taxed later on, on things, on items?
No, sir. So all of this money has been acquired through lots of different sources. The village has acquired an infra grant through Federal Highway Administration. They've contributed a significant amount of their own funds. There's been state appropriations that have been passed. The counties contributed money. The DOT's thrown in money. So just about anybody that's a government agency has contributed somehow to this facility.
Maybe then some more, huh?
Yes, sir, if you, if you want to write us a check for $100 million, we can finish it.
Yeah, okay, I got you.
Do you have one? Well, we'll wait for you if you want to go home and get it.
And then again, just to refresh my memory, those lots that were, that are empty over there, it was going to mean something in the beginning, right? Is that why they were asked to, they, they were asked to be bought out and they, they sold, right? Is that how that was? And so, go ahead. So it doesn't mean anything now, they're just going to come, stay empty? Oh, okay, okay, so it's still not going to be a quarter though. It's just going to be just kind of a little, a little wing there of some sort. That, that would have been...
Some of the road will be over the top of it. It's just going to, it'll look significantly different than it does today.
Yeah, so, but you can't drive out, you can't exit or drive in, in that, yeah, it's just...
No, sir, you won't be able, from Chamisa, you won't be able to access the new road. And there's a wall barrier, there's a sound wall, there's pedestrian trail. We do have a pedestrian access that connects to the multi-use path that we're putting in from that Chamisa area. So we have a sidewalk in there. And then some of those lots are used for drainage as well. So anything that's a vacant lot that the village has obtained is going to be used in some form for this project.
Okay, okay. And the rental now, where the mobile homes, that's going to stay there or is that going to be?
It'll go.
Okay, so then that's going to be all kind of empty right there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Wyatt, we have one short final question online, really, yeah.
Okay, good.
Gary Cusler asks, if I'm heading south on Highway 47, am I able to make a left from 47 on Gull? How do I access my road? Your drawing isn't clear.
I'm thinking if his road's where it is, he's going to have to go past the intersection, do a U-turn and go back.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
So again, I thank you guys for coming out, sticking with us for two-plus hours. If you haven't signed in, I would ask that you please do that. We also have comment forms. If you guys think of something later, today, tomorrow, the next few weeks, please feel free to write that down and mail it in. There's address on there. I think we also have an email address on there. Or you can send it here to John and he'll get that entered into the record and we'll respond to you as best we can. Yeah, so, and then if you guys signed in, we'll keep you involved in any future meetings that we have, notifications that we have as far as when we're going to stick a shovel in the ground and start this project. So again, we thank you guys and appreciate your time.